Please.
Mr. Yule?
Uh, here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mrs. Flansburg?
Here.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Here.
Mr. Calder?
Here.
Mr. Signor?
Here.
Chairman Denny?
Yes.
Mr. Comenzo?
Here.
Mr. Tingly?
Mr. Tingu.
Here.
Yeah, he's here. Okay, uh, again, I'm going back to the travel center that we just were kicking through it, going through it. Has everyone got the email from Peter as to what we're talking about and removing that little island? Has everybody seen that?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, we saw it.
Okay, uh, Peter, uh, should I suggest we have a motion to take that out? Or how would you like me to, how would we just report to them that we're in agreement with it? That we wouldn't mind if they took out the island?
Jack, uh, I think, I think you should just make a, make a motion to approve the request. And, and it's all, uh, in the email. We know what you're talking.
Okay, well, that's what I'm gonna do.
To approve the request and vote on it. Yep.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna, Peter's got it written right here for me. A motion to request the removal of the, the planning island. Can we remove?
So, Jack, before we make a motion, I guess I see Fred's here, um, and he was the engineer on the project. I don't know if he has any questions or comments. I, I neglected to send it to him, but I can share the screen if there's any.
Yeah, Peter, feel free to share the screen, but I, I don't think it's a major concern of mine. Uh, I, I think it will, it'll work well with that change.
Okay.
Okay, back to where I was. Request to remove the plan, planning island. At the travel center, uh, next to the drive up window. As you've seen it through the emails that Peter has sent to us. I need a motion to remove that, to report that request to, uh, the travel center owners.
Mr. Chair. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Most by Mr. Yule, seconded by Clark.
Yep.
On the vote.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. Notice, drawing is back up on the board. Can you get that back off? What's that, Peter?
Yep.
Fred, I'm sorry I didn't get to you sooner. I didn't, didn't know that, uh, Peter, I do, Peter, excuse me. I thought Peter had contacted you about this earlier, but.
Uh, no, no, I did see that, by the way, at Peter, I did saw the email, so I'm good with that.
Okay, outstanding.
Yeah.
First thing on the, on the agenda tonight, it's a public hearing item. It's BDC Contract VND 693 Mariahville Road. Final site plan and two lot minor subdivision hearing review. The proposal of one hundred thirty-five thousand square foot, three-story climate-controlled storage facility on three-point-eight-eight acre portion on sixty-nine-point-seven-two acre parcel. Engineering, advanced engineering and survey PLC. Nick, Mr. Nick Costa was here, I think. Do, uh, give us any insight as to what's going on there? Nick?
Sure, Chairman, uh, thank you, uh, good evening. Uh, this is Nick Costa with Advanced Engineering and Survey. Uh, and we prepared, uh, documents that you're, you're, you've reviewed, uh, for the proposal from the BDC Group, uh, to construct a climate-controlled self-storage facility on Mariahville Road. Uh, and with me tonight is Cosmo Marfione. He's a, he's a, the managing member of the BDC Group, uh, and he's gonna help me with the, a presentation. Uh, there was a, a PowerPoint, uh, that, um, was prepared. And, um, uh, if he, if Cosmo can share the screen, uh, we'll, we'll, um, we'll get to the, um, the presentation. Cosmo, if you could go to the, uh, site plan, uh, uh, I, I like to start with the site plan and then Cosmo will go through the rest of the PowerPoint. Uh, so if you could, uh, scroll down to the.
Sure, sure. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, tonight we'll just talk about briefly the highlights of the project, uh, a summary of the project benefits and, and then, um, where we are currently and what we'd like the, the board to, uh, to have action on. Go ahead, go ahead, Nick. You wanna just talk briefly about the project or do you want me to do it?
Now, you, uh, you know, I, I just, uh, I, I, when we get to the site plan, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll get into some of the site plan items, but you can, you can start, uh, Cosmo and, and, uh.
Sure.
Talk about the, you know, what, what the highlights of the projects are.
Sure, sure. Uh, just briefly, everybody knows where the project is located. Is at, uh, six ninety Mariahville Road in the B, in the B two general business zoning, uh, district. The project, uh, will be a, uh, three-story, um, Class A self-storage, climate-controlled self-storage facility with approximately six-hundred-and-fifty storage units. The total gross, uh, square foot area is about a hundred thousand with a footprint of thirty-three thousand. We'll have some parking in the, in the front of the facility, thirteen spaces. And, uh, there'll be, uh, as Nick will describe, there'll be, um, uh, certain, uh, amenities such as, uh, gates and, and, and landscaping and so on. Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, thanks, Cosmo. So this is the overall, um, aerial, uh, view of the, of the entire property that Mr. Lucarelli owns. Uh, and, and its entirety here, uh, you can see the dark, uh, line. Uh, and, and we're doing a minor subdivision, uh, to, uh, subdivide this parcel, this particular, uh, you know, parcel right here, which is, is the, is the storage facility. Um, and, uh, it, it, it's, it has frontage along Mariahville Road. Uh, and then, uh, uh, you know, we're, we're coming in off of, of, of the road here. This is a, a blow-up of the, of the site plant. We're coming in, uh, this is our access road. Uh, we've left a stub, uh, which we expect to, uh, extend, uh, towards the rear when, when we get to the point of, of, uh, developing the remaining, uh, lands. Uh, but, uh, for the, the storage facility, we're, we're coming in, uh, off of Mariahville Road. And then, uh, we make a left and there's, you know, we, uh, the access, uh, is gonna be, you know, right on this corner. Uh, there's some parking here. There is a, there is a gate, uh, that, that's actuated. Uh, there's a gate here and, and a gate here, uh, to secure the facility. And it's actuated by, um, uh, the, uh, the, the people that have, uh, uh, that they'll have a, an actuator in their vehicle, uh, to be able to access the site. Uh, but, um, there, there will be, uh, people that can go into the site, park and go into the site, into the building, uh, and access their storage, uh, units. Uh, there is, uh, uh, as far as utilities, um, we are doing an onsite septic system right, right in this area. Uh, we are also connecting to the water line. There, there's an existing water line, town, town of Rotterdam, uh, water line, and we're connecting in, uh, into the building. Uh, and then as far as stormwater, uh, you know, we, we have, uh, shown, uh, the, the practices, uh, that will be constructed to take care of the runoff, the, the stormwater runoff from, uh, uh, the, the building and also from the asphalt, uh, that we're, we're constructing. So there, there's, um, there's, uh, uh, a, a facility, a practice that we're doing right here. And then another practice that, uh, we, we, another stormwater practice that we have in here. And that discharges and it will go to the existing, um, uh, stream, uh, or creek that runs, you know, bisects the site. Uh, a, and, and that's how, uh, we're taking care of the, of the stormwater. Uh, we, we are, uh, planting, uh, Cosmo, if you could go back to the rendering. Uh, you know, we are, uh, planting, uh, with, with, uh, different species of trees all around the, the site. There will be a fence that will be installed to, uh, you know, to, uh, protect the site. Uh, and, uh, uh, there, there is an area here that's reserved for, for parking of vehicles and, uh, uh, storage vehicles, uh, you know, for, for storage, uh, of, uh, recreational vehicles and, and also, uh, just, uh, uh, regular vehicles, uh, that will be stored here. Uh, and, uh, um, you know, we're creating that area for, for that purpose. Uh, we have, um, uh, gone through, uh, you know, an extensive review with, uh, with Fred, uh, from GPI. Uh, we've addressed, uh, their, uh, comments, their review comments, uh, and, and, uh, um, I think we're all set there. You, you know, Fred can, uh, uh, speak of, you know, for that, uh, much, uh, much more detail. Uh, we've also, uh, had, uh, uh, you know, we've made, uh, the first two, uh, applications. There's a stage one application and a stage, uh, two application from DOT. Uh, and, and, uh, you know, they're ready to, uh, receive our, um, request, which is stage three, which is, is actually the issuance of the, of the, of the permits for us to make this road connection. Um, during the review with the DOT, they identified, um, we, we identified and, and they, and they asked us to do certain, uh, uh, re-grading of the slope and also, uh, clearing this, this area uh, of, of vegetation, uh, that, that, that blocks the, the, the driver's view, uh, coming out of, uh, uh, of the, of the facility. Uh, so that's, that's what you see here. This is the grading plan. So this is all re-graded, uh, and, and it's gonna be kept in a lawn, uh, type, uh, vegetation. You know, nothing, not, no, no, uh, big trees planted in this area. Uh, and in addition to that, the guide rail, there's a, there's a guide rail that, that runs along the frontage, i- i- the entire frontage, uh, that's gonna get removed. And, and that's the purpose of re-grading the slope is that, uh, the grading, uh, the re-grading of the slope will make it, uh, more gentle so that it, 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 the, it doesn't warrant, uh, a guide rail. Uh, and, and we did all that with the, uh, with the consent, uh, or, or with the, um, agreement of the, of the New York State DOT. Uh, there is also a sign that the DOT identified, uh, that they, it's a private sign. They, they would like to, uh, let the, um, you know, the owner of that sign to remove or relocate that sign because it, it's also creating, uh, a hardship, uh, with regards to the site distance. Um, so, you know, that, that's the, uh, that's the bulk of the presentation for the site. Uh, you know, everything is going towards the rear, uh, just as it naturally, it naturally does. Uh, uh, the site, uh, was used for, uh, uh, planting agricultural purposes. Uh, so it, 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 it's not a, a really steep site. It's a fairly, uh, level site, uh, other than the transition from the, uh, from the fields up to, uh, Mariahville Road. So, um, I, I, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Cosmo, who will take you through the rest of the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
Sure, um. Let me just briefly talk to you about the building. This is a, uh, this is a rendering of the building. Uh, the parking, uh, in the front, the, the fencing as, it's pretty realistic on what we're gonna do here. Three stories, we normally use, uh, a, uh, a cladding system provided by a national firm that we use for all storages. It's a, it's in a, uh, you know, metal, metal cladding system. The inside, um, of the project, like I said, will be climate-controlled, not only, you know, heating, cooling, but also humidity control. We've added, uh, these canopies as good, some good accent points and areas, um, you know, protect, protected from the weather so that folks could like, you know, could, could use these entrances to go in. Um, we've, um, you know, three stories, pretty level, all the way around, pretty, pretty easy project, slab-on-grade. And there's really not much to it. Uh, the, the roof will be a, uh, uh, some sort of a metal roof. Um, modularized and panels put together. Uh, we'll have plenty of lighting around the, uh, perimeter of the building, uh, with some lighting in the parking areas. Uh, we've also got some ballasted lighting here in the front entrance. The front entrance, essentially, one section will have, uh, a retail spot where the, uh, manager and leasing manager will sit. And this other area here will be where, uh, folks would come in, uh, as one of the main entrances to go into the building. There's, there'll also be some, uh, a few entrances around the building. Um, uh, obviously, uh, alt to code. Um, that, that's, that's, that's really it. We have video cameras, very intense video cameras around the building. There'll be some sort of a, uh, key code pedestal that's shown here, uh, that you will punch in to enter, um, you know, to enter the, the, the rear areas. And then there'll be a motion activated, uh, key co, or key code pad to exit. Um, you know, we'll make sure that the, uh, entrance and exits happen at different ends of the building, uh, so that traffic, uh, you know, so, so that you have good traffic around, uh, the, the facility. The facility will be open, uh, seven days a week, especially at the, at the beginning. While, while we do the lease up, it probably would be somebody in this office seven days a week. And then obviously, um, the facility will be, uh, accessible to the patrons, you know, you know, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. So some project benefits, uh, you know, where we, we, we're gonna commit. Uh, the project has a capitalization cost of around twelve and a half million dollars. Um, it's a Class A storage facility and I, I think it will complement all the apartment growth in the, uh, in the Rotterdam area. Uh, we'll be creating fifty to seventy-five construction-related jobs and, and three full-time, uh, positions. We are, we are currently in the process of building a very, very similar, uh, looking building, uh, in Milton, right outside of Saratoga, and, uh, it's going real well. Uh, you know, uh, we, we usually tend, once we get started, we could get in, in the ground and up and completed depending on when we start and the winters, uh, within twelve, you know, twelve to fifteen months. And in conclusion, you know, like Nick said, we've addressed all GPI's comments and, uh, you know, an exhaustive amount of comments from the DOT. And, uh, I understand that Nick recently, um, was provided with some DPW and fire department comments, which we discussed today. And, um, you know, we, we will address in, in, in short order, um, as a condition of hopefully the, the site plan approval. Um, you know, action today, obviously, we want a negative declaration for the secret termination and, uh, a positive vote for site plan approval as, um, you know, we've, we were very patient through this process uh, since our first, uh, meeting in June of twenty-eight nineteen. So, uh, I appreciate your time, uh, this evening and, um, we're open to answer any questions.
Okay, at this point, what I'd like to do is, uh, turn it over to our TDE, Mr. Fred Mas, Masriani from GPI. He gave us his views as what's being done and how he feels. Fred?
Uh, thank, yeah, thank you so much, Jack, and thank you to Plan Board, all the rest of the Plan Board members and Peter for the opportunity to review the project. Uh, so basically what we did is we reviewed the entire set of site plans and all associated details. The stormwater management report, the stormwater pollution prevention plan. We reviewed the environmental assessment form and supporting documentation. And, uh, we reviewed the intersection site distance, uh, analysis that was done, uh, by VHB through, through NIXA Firm. Um, and, uh, pretty much everything is, as far as I'm concerned, everything's been addressed. Um, as far as the, uh, DOT and the site distance issue, uh, I think we provided a good design where we're eliminating the guide rail, as Nick mentioned. We're providing a one-on-four slope, which, and also an eight-foot grass shoulder off the pavement edge. So the nice thing about that is when you're eliminating guide rail, you need to be careful because you have to have enough distance for a vehicle to recover. And usually anything with a one-on-four slope or flatter is considered recoverable slope. And so, uh, you know, obviously when you remove guide rail, you gotta make sure it's safe. And I think that Nick, uh, did a good job with the slope and making sure that's, that's the case. Um, and as far as the, uh, the shop sign is like Nick mentioned, that, uh, was also suggested by DOT to be removed to improve site distance. Um, and, uh, you know, we have, we've provided three comment letters. Um, one dated, one dated July fifteenth, twenty-twenty, August twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty, and the last one being March eighth of this year. And, um, all the engineering comments have been addressed. And, um, you know, we had some notes to the town. That's more like a to-do list. But, uh, as far as GPI is concerned, we're comfortable with the project and the design and, uh, feel that it's a, a nice project in the town.
Okay, Fred, I appreciate that. Uh, I'm gonna open it up to the planning board. Uh, could you take that, the screen down and just?
Sure.
The, the, that's it. Uh, I wanna open it up to the planning board to see if anybody has any questions or comments. Uh, Mr. Yule, I'm gonna start out with you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to say it's a gorgeous building. Uh, it'll be a, a big improvement out there on the, on the end of Mariahville Road. Um, so I, I never seen, uh, a storage facility quite like that one. You know, they, the, uh, I love the color combination and the layout of the building looks nice. It looks like the first floor has maybe some, um, sites you could back into and access right from the parking lot where you wouldn't have to go in the building. They're probably not climate-controlled, but, uh, it looks like it's got a, a good, good combination of, of things there. Uh, the one question, or I had a couple of questions. Uh, this site is sixty-nine-point-seven-two acres and you're subdividing three-point-eight-eight acres off for the storage building. Uh, have you purchased the whole site or are you just purchasing the, the four acre?
Yeah, no, we're the contract VND for the entire site.
Okay, so you do have some plans. That's why this roadway is configured the way it is with a stub so that you're gonna take it in and for whatever. I noticed in here it said something about, uh, apartments. So you're, you've got some idea for, uh, to put an apartment?
To put in a, a, uh, most likely a condominium development as apartments, yes.
Well, they're moving the sewer line up, Burdex Street, so you'll, uh, you'll have to get that, uh, set up so that you can get a forced main down to, uh, Mariahville and Burdex. So, no, that would be excellent. That would be, you know, good for that site. I know, I know Mr. Lucarelli had, had it planned a few years back and then he withdrew the plan, so, uh, but it's good to know that there's a additional, um, vision for this particular site. So, uh, other than that, uh, you know, Mr. Masriani is happy with the comments. And like I said in previous meetings, when the TDE is happy with all your responses, that makes me happy. So, uh, you, uh, good luck with it and, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Yule, uh, Ms. Flansburg, uh, any comments or questions?
I have no questions, just a similar comment to Mr. Yule. I think it's a, a nice-looking project and, uh, I rely on our TDE for the intricate decap, details of it. So I have no, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Calder. Mr. Calder, any questions or comments?
Well, just, just a little bit, um, it's a quite a sized building. That's big. That's gonna be nice. That's, uh, it does, I agree with, with, uh, Tom Yule. It's very, very nice-looking building.
Very impressive, it is.
Yeah, it is. And that, that area out there will, that's a good place for it. It really is.
Absolutely.
I'm assuming all nineteen conditions have been addressed by our TDE as far as, uh, okay. That I've seen a shake of the head, Fred, I think that.
Fred, Fred does a great job.
Yeah, and, uh, uh, the back-to-back property that eventually, uh, you plan on doing something with possibly condos. Uh, you probably gonna have an issue back there. Not that I know the area a hundred percent, but there's some water issues back there. Wetlands, am I correct?
There's, there's some areas that are wetlands.
Yeah.
Uh, but the property is, um, is large enough that we could circumvent those areas and, and, and minimize any encroachment in the buffers, in the buffer zones. But there, there'll be several, several phases and, um, and, uh, let's, let's see what happens.
One project at a time, right?
One project at a time. We, we like to, uh, this will be our first project in Rotterdam, so we wanna show you, uh, introduce you to our firm and, um, you know, and show you what, how we operate and, and so then everybody feel comfortable, you know, with us.
Yeah, I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the time.
Okay, uh, Mr. Collins?
Everybody, it's a great project, great building, and all I can say is you, uh, set the bar high for anybody else that wants to build a climate-controlled building, which is good. So I'm good with it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Signor?
Uh, one, uh, question, it's just for my own interest. When you say, uh, climate control, you mean basically it's the same temperature or close to the same temperature year-round inside, right?
Yeah, we have a range, uh, of temperature, but we also, um, what we also do is, uh, monitor humidity and, and, uh, that, that's a big component. Everybody forgets about the humidity. Uh, and fresh air, you know, what, what we do is, uh, we, we, we have a humidistats all around and we introduce, um, uh, you know, there's, I don't wanna get too technical, but we, we definitely monitor the, the, the incoming flow of fresh air, uh, as it gets, um, exhausted out. So that's, uh, very important to us.
So it keeps the storage items like free from mold or?
Exactly, exactly. In fact, what we, what we also do in our buildings, we try to, um, uh, have, uh, a series of fans that go all the way around so that it evenly distributes the, 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 you know, the flow of air throughout the space. Because, you know, thirty-three thousand square feet, we have to make sure, uh, that we're doing so. And with the new energy codes, all the buildings are so tight these days that it's very important to have that exchange of air, um, you know, going in. And everything is monitored digitally and all that. Uh, so, you know, so, so, so we're pretty, pretty sophisticated when it comes to that. We also, um, you know, keep in mind, uh, we, we use the, the most efficient, uh, uh, sources, um, for heating and cooling and, and dehumidification. Um, you know, as, as we, we don't sell these buildings, we maintain them and, you know, for the long run. So, so we always keep that in mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're all set, Joe?
I'm all set, Jack. I like it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Del Sandro, any comments or questions?
No, I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, but that's a, you know, like I said before, that's a great project for that area. Um, it's a gorgeous building. You should be really proud of it.
Thank you.
That, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is a, uh, a public hearing at this time, so I have to open it up to a public hearing. Uh, Mr. Ting, Mr. Tingly, uh, could you read a statement regarding the submitted public comments, please?
Sure, um, so like all of the other public hearings since March twenty-twenty, uh, this one is being held remotely pursuant, pursuant to executive orders. The notice of public hearing provided instructions on how the public could access the public hearings. It also provided instructions on submitting comments. Uh, to be considered written comments were to be received by, uh, March fifteenth at four PM. Those were, uh, to be emailed or mailed to Peter Comenzo. And, uh, al- also persons wishing to speak at the public hearing were able to sign up by calling or emailing Mr. Comenzo and providing identification information, uh, so they, so that they could be called on. Uh, Peter, did anybody provide any written comments or sign up to speak at this public?
No, Mr. Tingly.
Okay, we're all set with that, uh?
Okay, Jack, so you can go ahead. Yep, you can go ahead and open it up if anybody wants to speak.
I'm gonna do that. I am opening up now, opening it up for a public hearing. It says, and does anyone have any comments they'd like to, uh, address? Anyone have any comments they'd like to address with this project? I ask you one more time, anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing. And at this time, I need a motion on draft seeker, negative declaration as prepared by a town planner. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Collins?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Calder. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. Motion on the two-lot subdivision. Need a motion on the two-lot subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion on the two-lot subdivision.
Motion made by, by Mr. Yule. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's all right.
Motion made by Mr. Yule?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Del Sandro. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes. Last thing on the, well. Last thing on the, oh, the motion on the site plan for the storage facility with conditions.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that their Rotterdam Planning Commission approve the site plan subject to all the written and oral comments that have been made.
Motion made by Ms. Flansburgh?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Collins. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Nick, you're on the road here.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Everybody stay safe. Really appreciate it. Looking forward to working with everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Night.
Okay, next thing on the agenda. Joseph C. Coons, seventeen seventy-nine Curry Bush Road, final two-lot minor subdivision, hearing lot number one, five point seven four acres, a proposed single-family residence, lot number two, a hundred and nine acres with existing single-family residence, engineering ABD. Mr. Luigi, are you here tonight?
I'm here.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey Luigi.
So I'm gonna shut my screen here if that's okay.
Yep.
You're getting better at that.
This one's right, because it's just one sheet I gotta share. Wait till the next one where I gotta like, go between a bunch of other ones here, so.
Okay, could hardly wait.
All right, so, good evening Luigi Palasci with ABD Engineers uh, here tonight for final subdivision approval at seventeen seventy-nine Curry Bush Road uh, for Mr. Coons. Uh, since the last time you saw this, uh, we made a few modifications. Uh, we've answered the DPW comments. Uh, one of the modifications we've made is we've, we made the, the lot size a little larger. If you recall, um, this uh, westerly line here was closer to the septic system and the proposed lot size was uh, right around five acres, just under. And when talking with Mr. Coons, uh, he asked that we move this proposed line further to the west, uh, which gives a little more room for the septic system. And it also provides an even five hundred by five hundred um, lot size. Uh, making the proposed lot size now five point seven four acres. Uh, it's for his single-family residential home. Um, he's subdividing it from his parents, uh, Mr. Coons. Uh, that will remain uh, as it is today. Um, uh, well, has been installed on-site today. Um, all the data has been provided to the town. Uh, the septic system has been, um, the soils have been reviewed by Schenectady County Department of Health. Uh, we did the test pits and it's a raised-bed septic system. However, uh, the sand has been brought into, to site today. Uh, it's going through freeze thaw, so we'll be submitting for building permit soon. Um, and that review will be done for septic system review by uh, the, the Rotterdam Building Department. Uh, the proposed driveway that's here off of Curry Bush Road um, has been discussed with the uh, the Schenectady County DPW. Uh, the, in your packet, there should be a uh, email from Angelo Malillo from Schenectady County uh, DPW accepting the driveway location uh, for the single-family residential home. Um, so that's pretty much it, Mr. Chairman. Um, if any of the board members have any questions, I'll be certainly uh, happy to answer them, so.
Okay, I'll take your drawing down so I can.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, I, I'm familiar with that area up there. I used to have them people that owned that land for customer years ago. Uh, let me see, Clark, how about you? Any questions or comments?
No, it's a pretty straightforward project. Uh, I got that email from uh, the county. I, I read the well report, so I'm fine with it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Flansburgh?
I agree also. It's a fairly straightforward project, a small subdivision for them to build their property. I think it's, it's fine.
Okay, uh, Mr. Calder?
Uh, just quick for my own benefit, uh, Luigi, what is, a raised-bed uh, system doesn't require leach fields, does it?
It does, yes.
It doesn't require leach fields.
Yep.
Which way do they go out? Toward the property line or toward the road?
So, the raised-bed septic system is basically bringing in the uh, septic sand, right, a sandy material to, to gain separation from high groundwater. So you put in the sand and then within that sand is where the leach fields go.
Oh, well, not like I really understand what you just said, but thanks, I just curious.
Yeah, so it's no different than what's in anybody's backyard for, for leach fields. We just bring it in sand first and then putting the leach fields, you know, higher up into the existing ground.
So it seeps down in and uh?
Right, it does the same exact thing. All we're doing is we're providing the separation distance to high groundwater.
Okay, um, as far as the well information, we have it here in our packet. I'd like you to read it because it's, the print did come out very well.
It is hard. I, I agree. Um, the copy that I received was like the yellow carbon copy from the well driller. And I, when I made copies of it, I darkened it as best I could and that's how we got, but if you need a better copy, I could try to get one from the.
No, I'm, I'm good with that. I know it's been addressed in the, in the comments from the Verma seventeenth. I, I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Yule?
Okay, um, I got the same email from Angelo Malillo that everybody else got, I believe. But the email doesn't make any sense to me because he says he's writing it to Mr. Coons. Now, they're both named Mr. Coons, so I assume he's writing it uh, to the individual who's sectioning off the five hundred uh, by five hundred foot parcel. And it says the existing entrance into seventeen seventy-nine County Road, one, number fifty-two. County did a site distance for this address and it meets all the um, MTMUTCD manual criteria. This has been an entrance into this property from our county road. Okay, so that's the seventeen seventy-nine is the existing farm that's always been there. And he's saying that that entrance is good. He doesn't mention the other entrance at all for the new part of the, the piece that's gonna be. Well, I, I'm looking at it. I can see by the map, it looks like it's got plenty of site distance on either side, but everybody goes, oh, I read the email and I understood it. I don't understand. Okay Luigi, clear me up.
All right, so, so you're right, seventeen seventy-nine Curry Bush Road is the address for the parents. Uh, we do not have an address for this proposed lot yet. Uh, we did reach out to, right, and we did reach out to Mark Stordy with the county to try to get one, but he can't assign it yet until the subdivision's approved. So, so when, when we reached out to Angelo, the existing driveway he's referring to is the existing driveway that has already been installed for Mr. Coons' new subdivided lot. So there is a curb cut there today and it was approved by Angelo. Um, I wasn't aware of that at the time. I, it was a proposed thing, but by the time that email came through, the curb cut was already installed and approved by Angelo. So that's when we went out and reached out and, and got this documentation from Angelo because of one of the DPW comments. Um, and then just so you know too, um, Mr. Coons, the, the son also works for Schenectady County Highway. Um, so he's got a little bit of a connection there, so, you know, he, he put the driveway in and then we saw the DPW comment and got it addressed by uh, you know, from Angelo Malillo. So, yes, the driveway's in and yes, it is approved for this proposed lot.
All right, that's what I need.
And the other reason, the other reason why that driveway was installed was so that he can put that in to get the well drilled as well.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And, and then when he starts construct, all right, I just, it didn't make any sense to me because when he said existing, I assumed he meant existing at seventeen seventy-nine because I knew you couldn't have an address if you didn't have a, oh, okay. All right, that's all. That project looks good and uh, more power to him. All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, let's see, Mr. Signor, Joe, I need to ask you a question.
I'm good.
Okay, that's what I like to hear, Joe.
Good luck on this project. I hope he, I'm sure he'll do a nice job and have a beautiful home.
Okay, uh, Mr. Del Sandro?
Um, no questions, Mr. Chairman. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, at this time, this is a public hearing. Uh, I'm gonna open up to a public hearing. Mr. Ting, Tingley has already uh, made the statement regarding public hearing and public comments. So Peter, has anybody called in with comments?
No, I have no, received no uh, inquiries.
No inquiries, okay. Uh, again, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Anybody have comments? Questions? Anybody have comments or questions? Okay, I need a motion, uh, the draft seeker, secret negative declaration as prepared by our town planner. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Yule?
I'll second it, Jack.
Seconded by Mr. Del Sandro. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes. I need a motion on the two-lot subdivision.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Calder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Flansburgh. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. Let's see where we're at. We're at uh, our third, excuse me. Thing on the agenda. Supply Ventures eleven LLC, Northwest Corner, Burdick Street and Prince Town Road. Concepts, concept sketch plan, special use permit to construct a multi-tenant sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty square foot retail office building on two point seven acres. Engineering ABD, Luigi, you're back up.
All right.
What are you doing there, buddy friend?
Good. All right, let me see if I can do this again. All right, can everybody see my screen here?
Oh yeah, beautiful.
All right. So good evening again, Luigi Palasci with ABD Engineers um, here tonight to discuss a sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty square foot proposed building. Uh, the, the parcel is the old Thomas Zone parcel. Um, it's located at the north, would it be the north um, west corner of Burdick Street and Prince Town? This is Burdick Street and Prince Town Road here. Uh, as you can see, it is a vacant parcel right now. Uh, there is a gravel driveway that used to serve where Thomas Zone's instruction business used to be. Um, this business here to the north is actually RBM. Uh, you got the railroad tracks on the west and then on the south, you have Burdick Street and on the east, you have Prince Town Road. Um, the site is currently zoned light industrial. Um, back in the nineties, the planning board approved a site plan for a twenty thousand square foot building um, with a hundred and twenty parking spaces. This building was for a retail building, uh, one-story in height. Uh, it had existing uh, proposal or had proposed uh, curb cut along Burdick Street as well as uh, Prince Town Road. The utilities at the time, um, water, it's in the water district, um, and then they had a proposed septic system. That obviously hasn't been built, uh, because the site is currently sitting vacant now. Our proposal tonight, and I'd like to introduce the applicant as well, is uh, Jody and Joe, Joe Drizuba. Uh, they're, they're the applicants um, under Pupia Ventures. Um, also on the line tonight is David DiOratona. He is the general contractor that is part of the, the project team um, guiding us through uh, the construction end of things. So, what we're proposing here tonight is very similar to uh, the, the layout that was approved back in the nineties. Um, it's a one-story building uh, with sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, the orientation is, is positioned a little different than, than what was previously approved. Uh, we felt that we wanted it to be run parallel with Burdick Street uh, so that as you're coming in and, and through this intersection, you're looking at more of the building. Whereas the, the other layout, uh, you'd be looking at the side of the building. So, we'd like to move forward with this uh, proposal. Uh, right now, we, we certainly can provide plenty of parking spaces. Um, I'm showing the layout here. Several of them are banked parking spaces. Uh, but right now, we, we would propose about seventy-five parking spaces that would be built out with asphalt. Uh, the curb cut locations are very similar. We're proposing uh, full curb cut access off of Burdick Street and also full curb cut access off of Prince Town Road. Um, as you know, Burdick Street is a New York State DOT roadway. Uh, we'll certainly work with them on uh, permitting for this curb cut entrance on Burdick Street. And with Prince Town Road being a county road, we'll work with the uh, the county highway department um, with, with that connection there. Landscaping isn't quite shown yet, but we, we are proposing the landscape. It will have some street trees. We'll have foundation shrubs around the, the uh, front inside of the building. Um, so the, the, the anchor tenant here is Average Joe's Fitness. Um, if you know Jody and Joe Drizuba, uh, they currently own Average Joe's and it's located on Campbell Avenue. Uh, right now, they are leasing that space and they've purchased this property. Um, so they want to own their own building and that's gonna be the anchor tenant. And what we're proposing here is, is three tenants. So it's a multi-tenant building um, with the fitness center and then also having a um, a health, healthy eatery. Uh, sort of a bistro, healthy eatery, which will serve soup, salads and bowls. And then the third tenant would be uh, an, an artistic arts center. Um, and we can get into details as we move forward uh, with, with each of those. Um, but we feel that we have plenty of parking space for those three tenants. Um, utilities, like I said earlier, it is in the, the water district, town of Rotterdam Water District. Uh, the water main is actually on our side of the street. We, the building will be sprinkled and we'll have a uh, a, a separate lateral uh, from the main into the building. And then right now, we are showing a proposed septic system. Um, at the time of developing this concept plan, we weren't sure where uh, the sewer district was going. Um, but I believe now uh, the, the district is gonna be extended. Uh, there's been some talk now with the town board uh, to extend the sewer district and this project is included in that sewer district. Uh, so we'll certainly work with the town on um, you know, extending and, and working with, with the town and, and uh, for the sewer district so that we can provide um, you know, septic sys- or not septic system, provide uh, for gravity sewer connection. Uh, stormwater, it, uh, if you know the site, Rotterdam and, and especially in this corridor here, we've done several projects around the area, all beautiful sand. Uh, so we're envisioning infiltration system for stormwater. Um, right now, we, we're gonna sheet flow the parking lot right into uh, the front area here um, and have an infiltration basin. Um, right now, the grades pretty much sit lower than, than both Prince Town, Burdick Street and um, the railroad tracks. So there, there is no offsite discharge. Everything will, is, is as it rains today, sits on-site even during frozen ground. And even after we're done with our detailed plans, uh, we're not gonna fill the whole site up and, and sheet away. We're, it'll still be low um, and have no offsite discharge, but we'll certainly provide a uh, a SWIP um, you know, for that, that works for the site as well as uh, you know, the stormwater calculations for uh, for the, the work here. Um, I do have a building elevation and again, this, this is conceptual. But this is what we're looking at for the front elevation. So, so this front elevation here would be facing Burdick Street. And then you have the rear elevation and, and the couple of sides. Um, so I guess going back to the site plan, I can kind of explain over on the uh, west end of the building would be the art center. The center of the building is gonna be the uh, fitness center. And then over on the east end is gonna be the uh, healthy eatery. And we do have some patio area off to the. And we do have some patio area off to the east side, which will have a little pergola for some outdoor seating, you know, when you're getting your soup or salad. And that's what's showing in this building elevation here. So you can see the pergola on the east end, you know, so nice looking building. Let's see, what else? Make sure I didn't miss anything else. I think that's pretty much it. So, you know, we're excited, the applicant's excited to, you know, work with the planning board and, you know, see if we can move this project along and, you know, get this under construction sooner than later. They do, they do plan on getting the first shovel in the ground, you know, by fall, I would say, by the end of summer to fall. So that, you know, they can get, working on it, shelled in through winter and wrapped up for, you know, springtime opening. So whatever we got to do, we'll certainly move this along and work with the planning board and engineers and everything. And I think the only thing really that may hold it up or not would be the sewer district. So hopefully, you know, we have that under control and we can move this along. So other than that, I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Okay, Luigi, this drawing that you're showing us, this is what it might be or it's a concept. It's not really exactly what it's going to be, is it?
Yeah, yeah, this is what we're proposing.
That's it right there? Okay.
Building placement, it, you know, we're not asking for any variances. The building is within setbacks. You know, plenty of parking, plenty of green space. So we don't see any need for any variances here. You know, just working with the planning board, I do understand that a special use permit is required because of more than one tenant. And we'll certainly submit that special use permit application. But, you know, we'd like to, like I said, if any action can be made tonight on either seeker, because back in the nineties, seeker was already established. If we can maybe get through that and start, you know, doing a coordinated review or whatever we can do tonight to, you know, get this project up and running.
Okay, let me poll the planning board and see if any comments or questions I might want to ask, seeing this is a new project. Excuse me, Mr. Yule, any comments or questions?
No, first thing I'd like to go on record is I've known Joe Drizuba probably for fifteen to twenty years. So I'd like to put that on record. Besides that fact, the project I think would be an asset for this section here because we're starting to build on the different corners. We've got apartment complex that looks like it's going through. I know across the street on the other corner is owned by another developer. So that may be developed shortly too, especially as the sewer line goes in. So by the looks of the elevations that Luigi just showed, I think this would be a good a good thing for the, for this section of town. And I like the concept of the fitness center where you've got the gym in there and you've got the cafe that's going to be a healthy food cafe and an art center. So that would be something that would, they would all lend themselves together. I'd like to commend Luigi on looking forward and storing, doing some bank parking so that if he needs additional parking at some point, he doesn't have to come back. He's already got fifty-one spaces banked and ready to go. So it looks like everything is, he's taking care of pretty much everything here. I know Average Joe's has been going, going strong down there in the plaza down on West Campbell Road. So it, it looks like he's going to take the next step and probably owning his own building would be very advantageous to him. So I wish him good luck and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Luigi, could you take that off the screen, the drawing?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Signor?
Pretty good, Jack. I just saw a quick question for Luigi. The stormwater management is basically a retention basin where you rely on it seeping slowly into the ground or comes off the site?
Yes. Yeah, we'll take advantage of the sandy soils. That's what DEC likes is recharge the stormwater right back into the ground.
Then recharge area is large enough to handle the surface areas of the site?
Yeah, yeah, we believe that what we have shown is large enough. You know, we'll certainly provide the details in the grading plan as we move along here. But we just wanted to share this concept plan and make sure we're headed in the right direction and then we'll certainly proceed with the details.
Mr. Del Sandro?
I think that's a great project for that area. That'll be a plus for that area. I work right down the street at Wade, so, you know, for lunch, I can go work out down the street. No, I think it's a big, be a great, great fit for that area. That's it, Jack.
Okay, Clark, Mr. Collins?
No, I think it's a good concept. I'd like the layout and it'll fit good there, especially if they can hook up the sewer. If not, at least they got the plans for the septic if it doesn't come to right away. So no, I'm good with it, Jack.
Okay, Ms. Slansburg?
I'm happy to hear that a business person in Rotterdam is trying to make a way for him, his business to remain in Rotterdam and sort of expand by owning the property and having some other multiple businesses in there. So I like that. Love that you're banking parking rather than putting them all out there and you may or may not need them. You can at least have it be green space or whatever you're doing with the banked spots. I'm not sure, but you can let me know. And then the only question I have is you kept referencing that it was approved back in the nineties. And there hasn't been too much development out there in that time anyways. It's a signaled intersection. How far from the intersection are both of your curbs?
Let me see here. So the property frontage is on Burdick Street is about four hundred and thirty feet. So I would say three hundred feet or so from the intersection to the Burdick Street curb cut. And then you have about a hundred and, or no, two, maybe two fifty along Prince Town Road for frontage and we're all of that.
Yeah, plenty of sight.
Plenty of sight distance.
Plenty of sight distance.
Yeah, and it's not a super busy intersection right now. But no, I think it's a fantastic concept. I'm in favor of it and we'll see where the rest of it goes.
Mr. Calder, Wayne, any questions or comments?
Well, Luigi, I guess you're waiting to see more about what the town's going to do as far as the sewer going out there. I, you may have an ear to somewhere that I don't, but you think it's going to connect that quick compared to what you need to do out there? As far as getting that building ready and?
I don't know. I, I, I think the timing will be right for this stretch, Burdick Street, you know, from the sounds of it. I talked to the town engineer there, Doug Cole, and, you know, next week, I believe, is the, you know, a presentation for the map planning report for this district. So it sounds like they're trying to move, you know, full steam ahead and, you know, if that takes a year, you know, then we'll be able to connect to that.
They are working on it to get that, I mean, we all would like to see that sewer line go all the way out to Route Seven. And they're working on it continuously to get it done. Okay, where are we at?
Jack, I wasn't quite done.
I'm sorry, Wayne, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
I'm good at that stepping on people's toes.
That's all right, no big deal. Okay, that covered that. So hopefully it's going to work out. And if it doesn't, you're going to, obviously, you're going to be into a position where you're going to have to keep going. And then you're going to have to put in some kind of a septic system, but I hope it works. I really do. You've got some green space out there. I know it's early yet. It's a concept situation, but you're going to need the green space for the drainage, am I correct?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so right now, do I have the green space percentage?
Just curious.
Yeah, I don't know if I have the green space percentage calculated, but we'll have plenty of green. Forty, yeah, yeah, we'll have plenty of green and we can provide that at the next level here.
It is early. I do wish him luck like the rest of the planning board members mentioned, but he's a good guy and I wish him luck with the project. Thanks. That's it.
Okay. At this point, I need a motion to declare lead agency.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion at the Rotterdam Planning Commission to declare lead agency for this project.
Motion made by Ms. Slansburg? Mr. Yule, on the vote, please. I'm sorry, Clark, did I skip you?
No, no, no.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Slansburg?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes. What did I do? What are you guys chuckling about?
Ah, Tom, nothing.
Okay.
Tom's getting me in trouble.
By going like this.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention, I guess. I need a motion to authorize the planning commission chairman to enter into an agreement with the town designated engineer to assist in planning commission and reviewing this project. Motion to give me the authorization to hire an engineer.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Calder, seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Mr. Del Sandro, on the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Slansburg?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carry. All you guys are on the way. Get started.
We appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Good luck there.
Thank you.
Looks like a good site, a good idea. Okay. Where am I at now? Next thing on the agenda.
Well, Jackie didn't mute yourself this week anyway.
Oh yeah, no, because I stopped using my keyboard, my notes. I'm moving them over, see? I'm always leaning on that. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is Titan Valley Development Incorporated, twenty-seven eighty Hamburg Street. Report and recommendation to the town board on a change of zone requested on approximately one point six acres from single-family residence R1 to retail business B1 to Main Street Neighborhood Center MSDNC overlay, overlay district. Applicant is proposing to renovate and expand the former Joe's Pizza into a restaurant banquet hall on the first floor and a sixty-six existing apartments on the second floor. Additionally, there is separate existence, excuse me, three hundred apartment building located on the property, engineering Hirschberg and Hirschberg. Mr. Hirschberg is here, I'm sure. I just saw.
I'm here, sir.
Okay. Someone from Hirschberg, okay, I guess I'm going to leave it up to you to give us a little insight of what they're talking about to the planning commissioners to understand what you're doing there.
Okay, my name is Daniel Hirschberg with the firm of Hirschberg and Hirschberg. With me is Joe Sutone representing the applicant and I can see if I can share my screen. There it is, I got to get it in there. Here it is.
Okay.
Can you see it?
Well, it's kind of, kind of.
Okay, I'll see if I can make it a little bigger. Bring it up closer so we can, we can see the area of the building, which you're primarily concerned with, I'm sure. This building exists now and there are three existing curb cuts in front of it that were put in by a DOT on Hamburg Street. The applicant proposes to make some improvements to the site and increase the parking to the rear and increase circulation to the rear. That requires a change of zone because the back of the building is actually in the portion of the R1 zone. Some things that are going back behind the R1 zone are proposed dumpster at the rear, some gravel overflow parking to accommodate the banquet facility. And also a proposed cooler area in behind the building. In front of the building, we propose to remove some pavement between the two curb cuts we intend to reuse. Add some landscaping. Along there, there are a couple of trees, two Adams crab apples and some boxwoods along there, which are, make a nice hedge. And then we tend to surround this patio area with a fence, gate over here and moving some asphalt and putting in a buffer of, these are Hicks upright use, which make a very nice evergreen buffer around that. And they could be maintained at six or seven feet tall, which is ideal for the use that they want to give some privacy around the patio area. The, there's a white fence going down the right-hand side of the property and that's going to be extended out towards the street. It stops about here and it'll be extended out towards the street. The, some other things are repaving the site to get new asphalt on it. I'm losing myself. And that's pretty much the plan. Now I'm prepared to answer any question which the board may have, which commission may have.
Hey, well, I'll take that, take that drawing down, please. Okay, I'm pretty sure most of the planning commission members are familiar with Joe's Pizza over there. Their additional parking in the back. Okay. Mr. Signor? Many questions or comments about that?
No.
Okay, hang on, I gotta get my, oh, it's right here. Mr. Yule?
I don't know where to begin here on this one.
I know, I know it's a lot, I know what you're saying.
Well, this is what happens when you, when you try and upgrade an existing building. You know, they, the, and I understand there was some work done on site here that was not, there were no permits for. And this patio has come out, you know, almost to, well, twenty-four and eighteen thirty-four, about forty-some feet from the, from the, from the road or fifty feet from the road. You're going to have this huge patio with fire pits in it. And then majority of the parking is behind the building. For me, I would never go here because first of all, I don't know where the entrance doors are, but I assume they're up near the front. They're not going to be in the back where the coolers and the freezer are. So they're either going to be along the side. So it's going to be quite a walk from the parking, especially if you're at a banquet, to get from the back to the front. You do have some parking over on the side by the apartment. And there are some parallel parking spots along the driveway going in. But, you know, and that's what happens when you have an existing building and you have this huge area in front that you're going to fence in, it leaves you no choice, you know. Probably would have almost, if he didn't own the land in the back, would have been to buy the property next door and make that into his parking lot next door. But it, it is what it is and I don't like it at all, but, you know, it's not the, it's not the engineer's fault. It's, you know, this is what he's been given to deal with. So we'll see where it goes. You know, from here, I, you know, as far as the report and the recommendation to do his parking lot, he's going to have to get that zone changed back there. So we'll go with it and see what, see what the rest of the board thinks. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Del Sandro?
No, I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I agree with Tom. I don't know about the entrance, but I don't even, I don't think we have any businesses now or restaurants that have open fire pits. I don't know if that's allowed in Rotterdam or if there's a safety issue, how are you going to secure them so nobody can mess with them when a building's closed? That would be one of my concerns, but I just don't know how they're going to get into this restaurant. It's a long walk from the back. But like, like Tom says, we'll see where it goes, but I do have some concerns about the fire pits and the entrance. But let's move forward, see what happens. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Slansburg?
No, I think similar to what Tom says, I think they're doing the, trying to make the best of what they have to work with. It's a good size parcel for what they're trying to do. I just don't know that it's laid out all that great. Overall, I don't have an issue with it. I just, I don't know if it's going to be the most aesthetically pleasing. um, aesthetically pleasing, um, with location of parking and entrance to the building and 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 such, but uh, I'm quite familiar with the building, I've worked there, I worked next door. It it's certainly ease of access and Hamburg Street's doing very well now, so um, I I'm not opposed to the change of zone, um, and seeing where it goes. I appreciate the improvements to the property though.
You're all set with that? All right, Mr. Calder.
Oh, I'm glad to see something happened there, it's been sitting there for quite a while now.
Yeah.
I I I agree with with uh, Ms. Landsberg, there's a looking at from the front, it's gonna be kind of strange looking, look at the rate of trees that set forty feet in from from out, you know, near the road and uh, I don't know how you're gonna, I I don't know what you put from there out, but anyway, that's uh, I understand the biggest, the biggest change is the, what we're really looking at is that uh, according to Peter, and I talked to Peter earlier today. Uh, was uh, uh, that parcel in the back, which uh, that's, and that's, you know, that's there's nothing back there, so interfere with that, so I I don't have any issue with that. When they're done, no, I really don't, thank you, I'm done.
Yep, I think the parking in the back is a little different, but uh, I'm sure the place will do well. The food was always good there and the new owners will probably be, be excellent there. I don't think the parking will will affect it that much, other than they need a zoning change. Uh, Mr. Tingley, uh, I need some information from you, uh, discussing the draft and report, the recommendation of it to the town board.
John? So I, I went ahead and uh, put together a draft report recommendation based on the application materials. Just to give the board some background, there it is split zone between the R one and B one zoning districts. Uh, but it's also overlaid with a corridor commercial zoning district overlay currently. And the application seeks to rezone the parcel from R one and B one to the Main Street Neighborhood Center Overlay District. Now, the, the issue with doing that is that the Main Street Neighborhood Center Overlay District is just that, it's overlay that a uh, developer to proceed a particular way, set up. Developer does not elect to proceed under that overlay district, once it's in place, the underlying zoning district regulations would apply. So, the way that I've prepared the report recommendation is to say that the overlay district uh, should change from corridor commercial to Main Street Neighborhood Center. That would still give the applicant what they're looking to do, as long as they elect to proceed under those regulations. Um, and it would still kinda make sense, if you will, because there would still be an underlying zoning district that it would default to if the applicant didn't move forward as planned.
We're losing you, John.
On in the report recommendations, have you heard me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I've had a tough internet connection today, so my apology. I've gone through the uses that are allowed in each of the zones that apply. Um, and have just identified those and have also identified what is permissible in the Main Street Neighborhood Center Overlay District. Uh, one of which I think is the most important is the mixed-use development, since there's a restaurant proposed and then upstairs apartments. And then, um, that would also allow the parking in their, on the rear portion. Um, and what I would just point out, uh, to conclude is that the report recommendation does, does identify that the Main Street Neighborhood Center Overlay District has particular design guidelines and standards that apply. Um, and since it's an existing site with it may be difficult for the applicant to meet those. But that, um, certainly there's variances, waivers that could be obtained from some of those or whatever, once they need to get those from um, and it could still move forward, so at the end of the day, uh, you have before you that I emailed you a report recommendation for a positive recommendation on the change of zone, provided that the change of zone is from corridor commercial overlay to Main Street Neighborhood Center overlay and keeping the uh, underlying zoning district.
So uh, you you need a motion from us to go ahead with the recommendation?
Yeah, if you're comfortable moving forward tonight, yes, a motion to approve the report recommendation, yep.
I'll move, Jack.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Signor, seconded by
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Collins, on the vote please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Glansberg?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
I just wanna mention one thing before I vote, uh, Mr. Yule said something earlier about this project with work being done without a building permit. Uh, I would hope that somebody makes this applicant understand that he's gonna have to building permit for everything he does from here on.
Yeah.
But I vote yes.
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. Okay.
Very much, uh, we hope to see you again.
Yeah, Mr. Hirschberg, yes, for sure.
Thank you very much, it's been about four or five years since I've been in front of this board, but it's a pleasure as always.
How we doing, all right?
Take care.
Do a good job, don't we?
Yep, you do, you move right along, you don't, you don't keep me up till eleven-thirty or twelve at night. Interrupts my chance to have a glass of hot milk and go to bed. Leave that one, I'll change my drink.
All our, all our members do their job, that's why it goes so well. Okay, I guess uh, at this point in time.
Need a motion, I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Richard Collins to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Del Sandro, he's giving me the, the high signal that he's ready to leave, so. Thank you, everybody, thanks Fred.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Bye, guys, John, you're uh, you need a, you have a a equipment failure badly.